Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the October 12, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. And as always, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I just ask you all to remain standing just for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I ask that everybody remain standing for a moment of silence for all those that were affected by the violence from the unprovoked attack in Israel and all of the people and the families that have been affected by that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 28, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 28, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going on to the updates, I'll go through them pretty quickly today. Do want to remind people, there is a unity rally stand with Israel tomorrow at 11:30 at Town Hall. I will start it off there, and we have some leaders from the religious community here in town that will be also speaking, so I hope to see you all then. Congratulations to the people that we celebrated in the past few weeks, Mary Hull, Jan and Ann Dubois, and the St. Lawrence Club, which celebrated their 100th birthday, so congratulations to all of them. This Saturday, there'll be another plaque ceremony, another moving along here at Greenwich High School, so I think that's at 11 o'clock, but we'll confirm it. GHS Hall of Fame, I'll be speaking at 9 o'clock at Zody's, which means I'll be at the gym at 6 on Saturday. Pat Mediate is killing me, but it's a great thing. We all started this about 10 years ago, and they honor former athletes of Greenwich High School, and then we're going to go over to Cardinal Stadium before the game, hang out there, greet some of the old-time players, and then we got the game there, so I hope to see everybody there. The Ablest Walk is this Sunday at 9 and 10, and then October 16, we have the Rick Strain Ceremony. Chief Strain is retiring, 40-year member as a chief, and then 50 years as a volunteer over up and around Hill, so I want to thank the chief for all he's done, and the new chief is a close relative of his, so we wish her well, too. UN Day is at Julian Curtis, 1 o'clock on the 19th. Riverside School is celebrating their 90th anniversary next Friday at 9, and we have groundbreaking at my old club, Greenwich Boys, I know Bobby D'Angelo is here, Greenwich Boys and Girls Club, 8:30 on the 23rd. I just want to mention a couple of things. We're continuing to get a lot of FOIA requests, and last night, the debate, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting that on and for all the people that attended, I think it was a very good debate, and people were able to hear about records and visions, and I think it was a very good thing for the community. But somebody was in the audience that just recently sent a Freedom of Information request, so I'm going to talk with the town attorney and others to see if we can start, just for transparency purposes, because we all talked about that last night, and what we've been doing for four years to promote transparency, to see if we can actually let people know who's making the requests, because some are doing it multiple times, which is fine. I think a FOIA tool is a good thing, but it also can be abused, and it has been abused, unfortunately, here in town, and just talk to any of our department heads and the legal department, and you'll know how much that has actually cost the town. So it's one thing to try and get some information that's needed, and we love the fact that we have that tool, but it also can be and it is abused at times, so see if we could maybe just post each week who's making these requests, just so the public knows, right? We want to be transparent. Also, I'm continuing to work on parking solutions here in town, meeting with property owners and retail owners and residents, and we're making great progress. You'll see something on the agenda today about, excuse me, opening up 50 more spots, to meter feeders. Those are people who work on the avenue and for decades have been feeding the meters, so the past four years, we've opened up 200 spaces on lots off the avenue at the top and middle at a discount, so those spaces have opened up. This would do 50 more probably for the couple of blocks at the bottom of the avenue, and then I'm talking with a private owner of a garage here in town that has a lot of spaces in it that are not used, so we're going back and forth, and I'll hope to have something to announce shortly, but the negotiations are going really well, and we thank them, and that would really make a dent in this problem, as well as looking at a few of the surface parking lots here in town to see if we could get something built in the grade and not an ugly standalone structure, something that would look nice to get us some more spaces wherever. The good thing is, as I mentioned last night, when we took office, there was about 28 vacancies on the avenue, there's only one now. There's a lot of commerce there, that's a good thing. This is a good problem. Outdoor dining is working, it's a great thing to have, but with that comes more parking demand, so it's something we have to keep working on, so that's all good news there, but it's an ongoing endeavor, that's for sure. The Flood Mitigation Task Force that we're going to be convening, I think is meeting later this week or next week, next week, and then we have a date for the Glenville follow-up forum, we had a couple of them that were, because of the elections and everything else that's going on, each time we pick a date, there's something else that bumps it out a little bit, or it's already been taken, so it'll be at the end of the month, we're looking at, we're just waiting for confirmation for the venue, and I'll let everybody know about that. So thanks again, everybody, and I'll turn it over to Lauren. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, and good point on the FOIA request, because I've been having people ask me, and folks are getting emails from people in political parties, and they're not sure why, and so they've been asking, you know, why is my name on a list, so I wonder if that'll shake out with making some of these FOIA requests public. Also, wanted to let people know that I met with the family council of Nathaniel Witherall, and it was more to talk about, not any candidates for the board or any future candidates, but just to clarify the process with respect, and I know that came up last night in the debate questions, on how candidates are selected, so that was like a really good meeting, I appreciated them taking the time to try to learn the process for people to submit their nominations and go through the Board of Selectmen and the RTM for this particular board. Central Middle School is in front of us, so excited to hear the MI request, or not the MI request, the request to refer MI to Planning and Zoning again, correct myself, and as Chair of the Communications Committee, worked with the Communications Subcommittee to put out some information in the press. There's a lot of information that is going out, or maybe we can classify it as opinion that's going out. There's a saying, I'll replace it with something that's politically correct. Opinions are like belly buttons, everyone has one, so we are just trying to make sure that the public is aware of the facts, so if you see some new information, and thank you to my Subcommittee, because they did the heavy lifting, and that's my update.
Thank you, Lauren. Select person McWigan.
Thank you. Well, like the rest of the world, I was horrified by the evil attacks in Israel, so I will certainly be here tomorrow at 11:30. Today, I'm not feeling terribly optimistic, but I will always hold out hope for peace, so I am looking forward to UN Day on October 19 at Julian Curtis School. There is more to our, coming back to our local and happier thoughts. On October 24, the Greenwich Sustainability Committee is having its next speaker series at the Second Congregational Church. It's titled Waste and Justice: Impacts and Solutions. And finally, I do want to take this opportunity to again thank the League of Women Voters for last night's debate. It was, as always, excellent, very balanced, and very professional. You know, as I said last night, the real winner is the Greenwich community, because it has a choice, and through debate, it can understand what that choice is. But that said, last night's debate was only 90 minutes, that's not a lot of time to understand the differences between all of the candidates, so I definitely urge all of our voters to do their research and come out and vote on November 7.
Okay, so we're going on to old business, and do we have our friend Rich Fulton with Last time, it was a little bit of a bad connection there with Rich. I may, well, I have his number, so I can call.
Oh, I see him, I see him.
And this is for the request of the temporary closure of Sound Beach Avenue by the Old Greenwich Merchants Association for First Light 2023. And we'll wait for Rich to be promoted. There he is. Morning, Rich.
All right, I clicked a whole bunch of buttons, but here I am.
Good morning, Rich.
How are you guys?
We're doing well, we're doing well. Thanks for joining us, and this is a second read, something we do every year, have not heard anything negative from the community, and it's always something that's looked forward to, and I'm ready to vote yes on this. I don't think anybody else has heard anything negative, but if they have, they can speak now. Rich, you're getting off easy.
Hey, well, 20 years later, I think we do a pretty good job, so appreciate the support and glad to answer any questions if anyone has any.
No questions here, I guess I'll see you Saturday at the game, but we'll take a motion now, I guess.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for the temporary closure on Sound Beach Avenue for Old Greenwich Merchants Association First Light 2023.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes, to one of my favorite celebrations of the year.
Hey, Rich, thanks a lot, pal, and we'll see you Saturday, and we'll see you in December.
All right, good deal, appreciate your support, thanks again.
Absolutely, have a good one.
All right, you, too.
Okay, second up is the request to dedicate the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, in memory of our friend Dan Warzowa, and, yes, in memory of Dan Warzowa, and I guess Steve Warzowa may be joining us. And this is another one that should be pretty quick. Heard nothing but good things about doing this. Danny was a great friend to all of us and was one of the mainstays during the pandemic, when we met twice a day and spoke probably three or four times a day during that and other storms, and there were some big ones, and Danny was truly a Greenwich treasure, Greenwich guy through and through. He always said Glenville first, and we always had to, you know, respect that Glenville guy, but loved his hometown of Greenwich, and his son, Steve, I was very proud of him, is joining us. And Steve, we haven't heard anything bad in this two-week period, and as we knew we wouldn't, so I know we're ready to vote on this, but do you have anything you want to say, Steve?
No, just again, thank you to all three of you, it's been wonderful, the outpouring that we've heard since this was first proposed at the first read two weeks ago, and again, thank you for Selectman Camillo, Selectwoman Raven, and Selectperson Stone McWigan, and everyone else who has been so supportive of it, and we're very, very encouraged, and our family is deeply blessed, so again, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I guess we're ready to vote.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to dedicate the Emergency Operations Center in memory of Dan Warzowa.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren is a happy yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Steve, thanks so much.
My pleasure, again, thank you guys so very much, look forward to seeing you all again very soon.
Yes, we'll get back to you, we'll pick the date, I think we were shooting for the end of October, so I'll get back to mom and you and the family. Thanks, Steve.
Excellent.
Okay. Going on to the next one, a request for the DPW Greenwich Stanford Multi-Use Grant Acceptance Process approval. Michael Kislak of DPW is here, I see Jim is here also, so the floor is yours, Mike.
Hello, everybody. Michael Kislak with DPW, this is the second read on it, so I'll be brief unless there are any specific questions, but just to remind everybody, we're looking for the Board of Selectmen to greenlight us signing the contract with Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to accept the grant for the multi-use path design and planning project. We just need it because of the indemnification provision, which we can't sign unless we get the board and the RTM approval. So we haven't heard anything from the public since last time, I think Laura sent a memo, Laura McGee with the town attorney's office, sent a memo and sent the contract over, so you guys could see that, and anybody else could as well, and Jim Michael was at the BET meetings this month, and we're planning to be back at BET and RTM in the subsequent, later on this fall, to get everything approved, but this is kind of the first step, so I'll answer any questions, but I think that's the main points.
Yeah, so I know the BET had some questions, BET members I spoke to support it, but they just had some questions that they needed to answer, so that, certainly respectful of that, it was a good question, but yeah, this is something that we all support, and I guess I'd remind people, when the governor came down and we did that ceremony, it was a ceremony to recognize the fact that this was a grant, okay, not the actual work, so that will come later. It was almost like a riba cutting for a grant approval, but it was a positive thing, so we like positive news, and so that was good, and we appreciated him coming down, and this is a good thing, this is part of our concept of, you know, active lifestyle and active transportation and getting people out there safely. We all know the bikes, it's not like hiking, I'm a hiker, and I'm protected off the road. These guys and girls are not, right, they're out there with vehicles, so we're trying to make, you know, connection along with, to fit in with the East Coast Greenway, which goes from Maine to Florida, but to do so in a safe way, and I think this is a positive step, so thank you. Comments?
I just want to say thank you also, I'm very excited about this project, and it absolutely aligns with all of the work that our Active Transportation Task Force has been doing, so thank you to all.
So I'll make the motion. Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for DPW Greenwich Stanford Multi-Use Trail Grant Acceptance Approval Process.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Jim, thanks, Michael, appreciate all your work on this. Okay, finally, last item in old business is a request for referral of consideration of MI status, municipal improvement status, for the Central Middle School Building Committee to PNZ, and our friend Tony Turner is here from the CMS Building Committee. Good morning, Tony.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. First Selectman, Selectwoman Raven, and Selectperson Stone McWigan. I'm delighted to stand before you and do a couple of things, one is to give you an update, and then most importantly is to ask for your support in a motion to, in making a referral to planning and zoning for MI status, so that they can review it. I'll have just a few comments, and certainly would be delighted to entertain any questions that you might have. First of all, you may know that the actual MI application and the preliminary site plan application, both have been filed with Planning and Zoning, they were filed on the morning of October 3, with a view that those applications would be circulated through the town departments for comment, with a view to the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewing those applications, hopefully for an MI status vote next Tuesday, October 17. My understanding is, in your packet, all 186 pages of your packet for this meeting, you've been given the copy of the applications, or at least have a link to it, so hopefully you've had an opportunity to take a look at that. So you have access to the application, I would like to give you a very brief update since I was here last in June. We have completed a variety of tests, specifically geotechnical soil borings, space programming, design review has been completed, outreach to the community, something that we are extremely proud of in the committee. We have had now three meetings of perimeter neighbors on the project exclusively for them at Central Middle School. In addition to that, we have had four community engagement forums, one of those was also doubled as a public forum, is only as late as the first week in September. So we have, again, I'm very proud of our work for outreach, we've gone to great lengths to make sure that we not only communicate via the website, the Central Middle School website, on the GPS website, but also through the meetings that I just highlighted. We've completed site surveys, hazardous material testing, traffic studies, and so forth. And then lastly, and I'll open it up for any questions, we had, I've forgotten the date now, in late September, an all departments meeting here at Town Hall, and I know, Mr. Selectman, you were very helpful in helping moving that along and endorsing getting the department heads together, so that we could talk with our professionals. First of all, it was a very successful meeting, and I think, I say that for two reasons. One, it was simply good to get face-to-face with the department heads, not over email, not over a phone call, and with all the professionals in the room at the same time. But more, but just as importantly, we were able to discover what I would call intra-departmental issues. Sustainability might have interest in two or three areas, well, so does IWWA, for example, and the list could go on, and we were able to uncover some intra-departmental, I wouldn't call them issues, but topics that multiple departments had interest in, and we were able to understand their specific areas of concern. We go into the Planning and Zoning meeting next week, we believe, with all of those issues heard, and we're working on them, I don't think there's anything since that has come up, so on that point, I would highly encourage you all as the Board of Selectmen to think about continuing that process of having building committees meet with the department heads, one-on-one throughout the day, back-to-back, so at the end of the day, we all know exactly what we're going to do next, we all know the internal communications that need to happen. So with that, that is the update from here, again, noting that we really would appreciate, with happy yeses, with happy yeses, any support for the MI referral to PNZ.
Thank you, Tony, for all your work here, and I agree, going forward, as you go through these processes, you learn some things, and sometimes you learn how to make a process even better, and I think that you're absolutely right going forward. I also see two members of the Building Committee here, Claire and our friend Steph, so thank you for the work that you've done, and you've come to all the meetings, and again, it's been a long road, but you're plugging away, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I could just support you in your appreciation of meeting with the department heads, I have been sitting on the Old Greenwich School Building Committee, and similarly, the Old Greenwich School Committee has been extremely appreciative of all of the time that our departments have been spending on those meetings. They happen before the official workday begins, they start at 7 o'clock, and we have really benefited from that interaction.
Yeah. Without a doubt, you know, all these building committees are working really hard, and, you know, Central Middle School being our largest, you know, capital project to date, there's a lot of i's on it, there's a lot of i's that need to be dotted, a lot of t's that need to be crossed, and, you know, everyone wants this school to be rebuilt, I don't think that's a question in anybody's mind, so the due diligence and, you know, all the steps that the committee is taking along the way, I know that the broader community appreciates it.
Thank you. Thank you, so I think we're all in agreement on this one, so.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to refer the consideration of municipal improvement status for the Central Middle School Building Project to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a strong yes.
Lauren Raven is an emphatic yes.
Oh, gosh, I don't know what's left for me, Janet Stone McWigan, an enthusiastic yes.
We have, the committee has no words now, that you use up all the adjectives, but thank you for your support, the work continues, so onward, thank you again.
We appreciate all you've done, and thank you.
You know, Laura Cospin has the conference.
Oh.
What are you voting about?
Yeah, I mean, sure, if she wants to say something, I didn't see that, but yeah, if we, that's okay. Laura Cospin, who's a member of the Building Committee, is waiting. Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. Well, you don't need my comment about how important this project is, but I really thank you for taking it up again. I had a whole bunch of remarks prepared, but I really do thank you for moving this project on and taking the time to deliberate it a second time, or a third time, actually, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and thanks for all your work on this committee, too, much appreciated. Take care. Okay. Going on to new business, first up is a request for consideration of the Putnam Avenue Tree Planting, Indemnification, and Maintenance Agreement, our good friend, one of the hardest-working guys in Greenwich, Pat LaRoe is here.
Don't put that on me, Mr. Selectman, thank you. Thank you very much, Board, happy to be here today. This is a longstanding project regarding planting on Route 1, I believe my predecessor, Katie, presented it to, I don't think this complete board, but to members of it in 2020. So this has been several years of hard work by a private partner, public-private partnership, an inter-agency partnership, so I just want to first say who's been involved with this, and thank you for all the help to date. So the Greenscape Committee was formed in 2020 out of the POCD, and we're, I say "we" because I'm part of it as well, but it's made up of members of the Architecture Review Committee, Environmental Affairs, DPW, the Tree Warden, the Planning and Zoning Commission, RTM, and also the Town's Tree Conservancy. And again, it was born out of Objective 5.6 of the 2019 POCD, to support the desired development, I'm just quoting from the POCD right now, "desire development in each functional sub-area of the post-road corridor, and meeting the town's overall goal of improving the appearance, further developing a sense of place, and enhancing the functionality of the entire corridor." And more specifically, out of that goal, there was subsection A, which is to work with the State Department of Transportation to guarantee that state-owned land along post-road corridor can be enhanced through landscaping and streetscape design and planning to meet the community character goals of this plan. So that's a long-winded way of saying, we would like to plant trees, and trees that have probably been lost over time by actions of the state in the right-of-way, that unfortunately it's our main street, you know, in town, our main thoroughfare, but it's not ours to design in, and we were seeking help from the state to do that work. The indemnification that you've seen, not dissimilar to what DPW was asking before, is needed for doing the permit work in the state's right-of-way and their permission. We have our third round of plans to them right now, but in order for us to plant in the fall and even possibly in the spring, we need to line up everything because of just the logistics of that. So we are here before you without a permit from them, per se, but we have a process in place, and we are asking for consideration of the indemnification agreement. I can go through the whole plan and the phases if you'd like, or we can take questions, I'm happy to run through the whole scope of what we're looking for right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar, I know we walked this a couple of years ago, Joanne and Margarita and Katie, I think you were there, and the concept is beautiful, if you've ever been through Brooklyn, there's Northern Parkway, Northern Boulevard, Parkway, you got, it's a beautiful tree-lined boulevard, and I think the idea is to really, this main road, the only state road in the town, is to make it so beautiful, and people are coming off the highway, right, we want them, the first thing, that's the first impression they get of Greenwich, right, and it's not even our road, but it's surrounded by Greenwich properties, but anything we can do here will really help our town and the image of our town, and I know from experience, not only in the legislature, but here in this office, that working with the state and getting, you know, approvals and all kinds of types of permits, encroachment permits. encroachment permits, is not easy. When we planted the tens of thousands of bulbs a few years ago, that was like pulling teeth. It was hard. So I know the work, a lot of work you've put into this, so I really truly appreciate. I know everybody in town will definitely appreciate it.
And not to pile on to the process, but we did start off with identifying over 300 tree locations, and we've wintered it down to phases because of just the amount of criteria that's being placed upon us for a number of reasons. So what you have before you now, the first 158, is ones that are free of any of those encumbrances that they have identified that we need to address. They are away from the road far enough for some of their criteria, or they are already behind or with other impediments that are within a certain distance of the shoulder. So we've done, we've had to do a lot of fine-tuning over the the scope of this project. So this is, again, this is just Phase 1. We expect this to be a multi-year process, and we will keep adding trees as we can find the locations or get approval, I should say, for the, we know where that we can, we know where we want to put them, it's whether or not the state's going to agree to let us do that, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I recall the start of this process and also all the care that the team put forth to the types of trees that would look nice and last and give us that, you know, beautification and that environmental impact. I hope that we could do something someday along all the trees that got taken down on the Merritt Parkway and I-95, especially in between the southbound between Exits 4 and 3. That was just like really sad to see. So I know that that'll be something down the road, but fully supportive of this, and I really thank everybody and the public-private partnership that was put in place to make this happen.
Same. You know, I understand, this has been a long time coming, so thank you to everyone who's been working on this. I know there's a lot of people that we need to acknowledge, but I do see Joanne Messina of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy in the audience, and, you know, thank you for all the work that you've done. You've been a fabulous partner, as well as an active partner on the Greenwich Sustainability Committee. Just, I think, relevant to today's discussion, I think the only thing that I just want to bring up for the for the benefit of our public is what identification indemnification means, and my understanding is that this is going to only cost us $65 a year, so.
Well, I'll update the number. So the first year was that, it's about 230 now for the insurance that we need to carry on it. It's absorbed in our regular insurance costs, so it's a nominal number. But it was originally, when we got it, it was about $65, and now it's 234, but it's, again, it's not, it's not a huge number.
My father, my late father-in-law would say a bargain at twice the price.
Comments or questions? Okay. All right, and so this, and it's just to remind people, it's going to go from from the one border?
Border to border. We we've selected certain locations, so to Mr. Raven's point, the between Exit 5 and the post-road there, that's one targeted area. We have several others near the top of the avenue by the YMCA. There's there's several sort of like locations that we've already targeted again, and it's so I can't say it's, I don't want to say it's starting in Koskab or Riverside, it's starting, it's going to, it's going to be in spots along the whole Route 1 right now. If we get the whole phase approved right now, then it would be more of a methodical east-to-west or west-to-east kind of product, so.
Thank you, and I assume since it's always 75 and sunny in Koskab, those are going to be palm trees?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate appreciate it. Okay, so we'll we'll let the public weigh in the next two weeks, but that's an exciting thing, and I know it's been several years in the making.
Actually, I can't believe that I am being the proponent of a vote on the first read, but I believe that.
Did you, is it, is it time-sensitive?
It is time-sensitive, and I, and I, not to short any process, because God knows this is what our department lives in, is this is a project of which we've been talking about for a while. This is just a small piece of it, this one particular part, so if I could.
I'm a big proponent of waiving first reads when there's no reason to to go.
I will not, I will not argue, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for consideration of Putnam Avenue Tree Planting, Indemnification and Maintenance Agreement. And before I say yes, I just want to explain that in this case, I'm not inflexible about taking a vote on a first read when there's an argument for timeliness, and there has been many opportunities for the public to learn about this project and weigh in. So Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo, is it yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Margarita. Okay, we have, the last two are requests from the Harbor Management Commission, and I see Ty and Jason here, and first, we're going to start out with, I guess, the request for the approval of the 2024 budget. So the floor is yours, and if this is time-sensitive, let us know.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Absolutely. We know you, but you have to introduce yourself for the record. Thanks.
Ty Anderson here with my harbor management colleague, Jason Helio. We have two related proposals for you today. I guess first the budget, but the reason we're coming with the budget now, rather than usually a month or two from now, is that we have a proposal to increase the mooring fee from $75 to $100, and we thought it was only fair for the Selectmen to see that proposal in light of its effect on the budget. So we've created a 2024-25 budget, and we thought, why not do it both at once? So the the mooring fee, this would be its first increase in 10 years, and the mooring fee, if increased, will be lower than it was 15 years ago. So that impact on the on the budget, our forecast revenues go up about $20,000, actually $10,000 over last year. We've got some catch-up revenues last year, so from $70,000 to $80,000. Our expenses, we forecast this budget to go up about $10,000, $70,000 to $80,000, and that's spread across a number of categories. Importantly, there's some money in there to do some remedial work. There, we know there are a number of abandoned moorings in the Greenwich waters, which create a safety hazard, especially low tide if kids are jumping in the water. We don't want them to get speared on the tops of old mushrooms. So there's some money for us to start doing some work to remediate those, you know, remove those moorings, which the budget did not account for before. So I think I've submitted the budget to to the board through Ken. Would you like to hear about the mooring fee before you consider the budget, or how?
Budget line is what's being considered right now, the mooring.
Yeah. Yeah, so you just do one at a time, but I know why you're.
But I think it makes sense to understand the mooring fee in the context of the budget.
You'd be happy, Jason'd be happy to tell you about the mooring fee and then come back and vote on the budget first, if you, your guys meet it.
Yeah, I think we normally, we normally do one thing at a time, and I get why you're tying it together, and because I think we do have some time here for a first read, because obviously, any time you increase fees, and I agree with you, it's, I don't think it's bad at all, but the, you're going to hear something, you want to, you know, get the feedback, so this would definitely be a first read, but yeah, I think we're, I know why you're tying it together, and it makes total sense, and we appreciate you actually doing this for us in light of that, so. But yeah, I think if you wanted to just do, if you just do the budget first, and then we'll go to the mooring fees.
Okay. So I think the the budget, I think I provided the budget. Are there any questions people have on the proposed 2024-25 budget?
Questions? Comments?
I don't have any questions. I've been so fortunate to be the liaison to the Harbor Management Commission. I know how much time and thought has gone into both the budget and the proposed increases in the mooring fees, so I thank you, and I think that it's great, we've, everything's posted. If the public wants to take a deeper dive, they have that opportunity, and thank you for coming forward, so so I'm actually fine.
Yeah, very few actually decrease, so.
I was just going to say, anytime there's a decrease year over year.
The BET would love you. The fact you're doing it early is great, so thank you, we have no questions on that. Jason, you're up.
Good to see you, Jason. I think you guys have the presentation over email, and Ty hit on a couple of key points, and I hate to be redundant, so I'll go quickly, but yes, like Ty said, the mooring fee has not been changed in a very long time. The last two moves in the mooring fee were to lower it. It's now, depending on how you calculate it, roughly 50% lower than our maritime neighbors, and we thought that, you know, given the 800 moorings that are in town, roughly half-private, half-public, it was a good time to get the fee up. And, you know, another thing that we looked at was the CPI, which in the last 10 or 13 years has gone up over 30%, and again, we have one of the lowest mooring fees in the neighborhood. So the mooring fee, and with Jenny's help, has done, you know, the mooring committee's done an amazing job collecting fees, we're at almost 100% success rate, but it still leaves a shortfall to what Ty said, which is alleviating some dangerous conditions in the sound with broken moorings, or moorings that we can't see, or mushrooms on the bottom. So based on all of that, we are requesting to raise the mooring fee from $75 to $100. That will give us another $20,000 roughly budget, and we will use that to make the mooring fields safer, attract, retain, develop employees to help us execute the vision of the HMP, and also to have a rainy day fund.
Thank you. Now, I know you guys have been doing great work with that, and it hasn't always been easy with a few of them out there, and I know the the new harbor master's been doing a terrific job. Someone had called me a while ago about an engine that was sticking up out of Koskab Harbor, and I was going to go out there one day with him, but the tide, it was the wrong time with the tide, but I called him the next week and said, hey, let's go out and take it out for this man who's been emailing for a while. He says, already done. He's on top of it, and I know he works well with you guys, so thank you for all you do, and we'll we'll take public comment, but perfectly reasonable to me.
Yeah, my only feedback, if you look at the the history of the changes, so in a single year, going up $35, and then two years later, going down, you know, $60, and that was 10 years ago. If you guys are going to think about, like, something that's a little bit more smoother and less bursty, I'm thinking about, like, Parks and Rec, they come to us every year with, you know, the fee increases, so just, I imagine as time goes on, it won't be such a long time between changes, because then it doesn't feel so, such a high increase if it's smoothed over time.
Agreed.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Jason, see you, Ty. Okay, thank you. Coming to public comment period. Mr. Wald, David, good morning.
For the record, I'm David Wald. I wasn't thinking of speaking, but then I heard what happened, and I'm all for the tree planting, but that you are capable of waiving the public comment period and take a resolution or take a decision at this meeting. So I would like to again present my in view of what's going on in Israel and in Mediterranean. Tomorrow is the 248th anniversary of the U.S. Navy. I proposed that we raise the U.S. Navy flag at the guest flagpole outside of Town Hall. It was turned down because of the time period of 10 days prior to a Board of Selectmen meeting. So I'm just hoping that maybe you could reconsider that. The second request that I had for October was on the 24th of October, the 75th anniversary for the UN, and I'm probably the only UN soldier in town, but just a reminder, I was stationed in Kafir Shubah, Kafir Haman, and Rashayel Fokhar, which is Hezbollah now.
Can you spell that?
Yep. Which is where Hezbollah is bombing Israel from now, on the north part. So since Julian Curtis is doing their UN celebration on the 17th, 19th, and the UN 75th anniversary is on the 24th, I would like to put an emergency request or whatever, to raise the UN flag outside of Town Hall on the 24th.
Thank you. So what we passed, and as.
And go Navy.
Yeah, I want to say, I have to be.
That's upside down.
I will say that my my maternal side of family is all Navy, and my dad was Marine, so, and they're part of the Navy, although he wouldn't admit it. There, yeah, you know, we, the flag policy we we just passed starts, you know, next year in January, but let's just, we can talk about this in the coming days, I'll, you know, sit down with everybody and see. I mean, I'm very pro-Navy, as I am Marine Corps, but but also, and the UN, I get all that, but let's, because this, you're throwing this at this right away, and again, we're trying to, we have to be very careful, right? Because some, the next week, somebody, two weeks from now, somebody will come in here with saying it's it's an emergency to put up something else, and emergency is a strong word to use, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't use that here in this case, David, but let's let's figure it out. We could discuss it a little bit more, because it's, again, if this was January 1st, there would be a policy in place where you come here, you request it, we discuss it, we have two weeks for the people, the residents of Greenwich to weigh in, and then we would take a vote. I think something like that would be a layup, would be very easy, but again, the reason why we put this in place was because we're getting some requests now that are not so easy, and so we want to make sure, you know, guarantee you, there would be a couple of emails this afternoon saying, well, you did this, what about this flag? And so let's, let me, I'll get back to you, I just want to have some chat with with our, my colleagues and Law Department on that.
Just a comment, it is tomorrow. Speak to the microphone, Mr. Wald.
He said it is tomorrow.
Let me address the two.
Okay, but would I, my comments, David, stand what I just said, is that you got to be very, very careful here, what we do, because, you know, an emergency, like, the Israeli flag that we're going to do Friday is very different. That that would, just like we did with the Ukraine flag, that's very different, right? But I, let me, let me get back to you a little bit later. Give me, give me a little bit of time to chat with people and.
Okay, let me just address the timeframe. I was all for the flag policy or rule, I think is a good thing, and I talked to Ken about this. My my application for the UN flag was brought up last year, and due to circumstances, it didn't happen. So it's it's there. Now, when it was, the system was two readings. Your second reading would be on the 26th, two days after the UN Day.
But the policy isn't in place yet.
It's not, it's not in place yet. That's what I'm saying, you're you're putting us in a spot right now, only because, again, we we agree with the the flags you're talking about, I'm pretty sure, at least I know I do. But again, you're throwing this at us right now at a time when we're getting a lot of requests, and if somebody comes at us with a request for a flag that's controversial, and you're going to say you violate, you're violating the spirit of what you passed last week, even though it's not in place yet, so we just have to be careful, and I get it, the UN almost was going, the home of the UN was going to be in Greenwich, Connecticut in the 40s, which a lot of people don't know, would have taken out the back country, parts of Stanford and New Canaan, huge, huge controversy here in our town. I think, I'm glad it ended up in New York, because we wouldn't have had the same town. But certainly, the UN, we've had ambassadors that have lived here, it's, it means a lot to us, too, so I just don't want to put us in a spot where we're violating the spirit of what we just talked about and had three reads on.
Yeah, no, I just want to.
And can I just clarify, too, like, we don't, we can't take up new agenda items, we would have had to amend our agenda at the beginning of the meeting by two-thirds vote to add something to vote on.
Yeah, okay, let me just finalize then, by, my request was answered by the First Selectmen's Office, that I could get it on the agenda on the 26th. Now I'm being told that the policy is not even there.
Mr. Wald, your, that conversation was about the POW MIA flag request you were trying to make.
And if, listen, at the end of the, at the end of the day, all these flags that you want to fly, make a list of it, and then in January, we'll take them up, and I guarantee the ones you're mentioning are not controversial, and I think they'd have broad support in the community. I really do. I don't think anybody's going to be against a POW flag or the U.S. Navy, that would be, that would be kind of hard to even imagine somebody being against that, and I'm sure somebody who was an Army vet will. And I'm sure somebody who's an Army vet will come, or a Marine Corps, or the Air Force. And that's okay. I mean, those are good things, but we, we put the policy in place for a reason, and that's to avoid, not what you're, you're not bringing controversial stuff, but there has been, and there will be more. So that's what I'm saying. You're, you're taking it as if we're saying no to you. We're not. We're trying, we've established a policy that we're trying to keep out of trouble.
It's very seldom that you say no to me, but.
I don't always, I don't always say no. We agree, we agree sometimes.
It's not always you say no. So I would just like to point out that I had no intentional speaking. It was only when you waived the two-week request, I saw an opening here for this. And I'm, I'm very careful with this, because for 35 years, I've been raising the Norwegian flag on one-day notice. So I am fully aware of, I have to apply for my flag, but when it comes to these other flags, I was hoping that you could waive the time periods.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Any more comments? Okay. Do we have any appointments or nominations?
None today.
Okay. Seeing no other business, thank you all for coming today. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Don. Behind the wall is our motion to adjourn.
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo, is it yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Thanks, Jason.